Father, we live in a day that seems as if things are upside down. There are people that call evil good and good evil. Let that not be the case here. I pray, Father God, that there would be peace and unity in our community. That our leaders would lead wisely and carefully and faithfully. That our people, Lord, would know that we've got people in charge that care for us and they care for the standards that you've set before us. I ask you tonight if you'd like this campaign to businesses conducted. I pray, Lord, that it would be done in a way that would be pleasing to you and that you would establish peace and unity among your people this day in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no division, just for all.
All right. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Not on the schedule.
Yes, sir. We request the council consider two amendments to the agenda. One is in-kind donation to the National Mental Health Organization. And the other is an in-kind conference room donation to Lardo County for an event.
What are we, in-kind?
On the National Mental Health, it is going to be a race, 5K at the New Lakes. An in-kind contribution to the county would just be a small conference room.
All right.
So we're talking about facilities, basically?
Okay. Moving on to the agenda.
I have number seven. I'm sorry, six.
Six and seven.
Can we just calculate it? One, seven, six and seven.
All right. Everybody ready for this agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
And next? All right. Moving on to the senate, gentlemen. All in favor?
Aye.
And next? And it is. So, routine decision. Resolution of men, resolution number 619, what group in the form of development agreement with Green and Cross Road Projects with Colet Properties Incorporated.
Okay.
And what's? I might explain this so publicly, but I won't do it.
Mr. Harrison with Butler Snow is here. He is upon town. He said, what's going on? Stop there.
Trey Harrison with Butler Snow. Good afternoon, everybody. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, the council. Before you is a revised development agreement between the city of Meridian and Colet Properties out of North Carolina. The revisions that were made are consistent with the city's parking group meeting that took place last week. And the revisions essentially allow for the sharing of sales tax for an amount of eighty slash twenty percent. And we made some other revisions to allow for the issuance of the bonds to take place up until five years. So the developer has that amount of time to get the property to where he thinks it needs to be and to bring all the different developments under one piece of property. And hopefully at that point in time, you'll have one issue.
If he does his work, then we do the bonds.
That is correct.
Now, can we obligate past term of this council?
Yes, this development agreement will be consistent with, you know, five years in the language pertaining to the termination of the bond.
This will make sure we're legal, that we can obligate another council?
Yes, I feel comfortable under the TIF Act and the Bond Issues Act that we're able to obligate this development agreement.
I just don't want him to come up two years from another council. I'm sorry. After he's been on the board. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Trey. Congratulations as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Walker, did you have anything to say?
Only had questions.
Better not ask questions if you've got something good going.
Thank you for your commitment to this project and also putting some skin in the game to make it so that it really benefits our city in a positive way.
Thank you for being transparent. All right, so ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
And the next? So, number two. Order authorizing supplemental application for the Culture of Health Prize from Robert Wood Johnson Foundation.
So.
Any questions?
This is Ms. Carmichael wanting to pursue a Robert Wood Johnson grant in response to call for a proposal for a Culture of Health program. Ms. Carmichael can give me some more information in detail on her grant request is for, you know, we plan to use a $25,000 share with the city.
Do we have it? We're applying for? Good evening. This is a request to apply for a grant with the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. It's similar to the Healthy Hometown Grant. It's in regards to communities who have come together to have a commitment to health. So there's no match to this if awarded. And it's just to help us in areas that we feel like we need to, you know, do things in our city, whether it be to a sidewalk, to help with a car, something like that. It's big by our discretion. It's just a request to apply for a grant.
And since we have already been designated twice from Blue Cross Blue Shield, does that increase our likelihood of being able to also possibly secure this grant?
I would hope so. We plan to ask for permission to apply for that award again this year as well. So I think anything we can do to leverage our, you know, commitment to health and fitness in our community, you know, is always a good thing.
We need to do another application in the mail concerning completion max. There's an area there that we need to apply.
Okay.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
And the next? So, number three. Order authorizing termination of contractor Brentley Mountain Fire Apparates to sell the fire department of 1993 E. One and Ninety-Five Custom Truck Platoon Apparates.
So.
Say.
Just a clarification, Mr. Counsel?
I'd like for Chief Lester to come up and explain this to you, what he's trying to do and how this will offset some future calls to purchasing a fire truck.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
What this is, is this truck was replaced by the 107-foot ascendant and was placed in reserve status back in December of 2016. We went into contract with Brentley Mountain to try to resale this truck. We have maintained all the checks on ladders, prongs, hoses, everything, just in case we had to bring it out of reserve status. Everything was good to run. We have since been just spending money to maintain it, keep it in operational condition, but it has not made any progress at all with Brentley Mountain. We've had like two calls in two years. So I'm proposing we get out of the contract with Brentley Mountain and try to put it on GovDeals.com to see if we can get some sort of money back out of the truck and quit spending money on maintenance and keep it up.
And we did get, I guess, confirmation from the terminals that there's no penalty for us getting out of this contract?
Correct. There's no penalty. The only money involved was if they did sell it, they would get 10% of the seller price.
And if we don't get out of this contract, if we just say, put it on GovDeals and sell it, we'll still have to give them 10% plus?
If they contract with them, yes, ma'am. That's what the contract says.
So, yeah.
What's the 2017 lease that, what's that for? The 2017 offsets the cost of person. That's who we was hoping to sell it by. We did not want to let it go before we got the other truck here. So we told them ahead of time, we're not going to release it until sold until that time. And they agreed with that.
Where you play it?
The history is still history on it. We've had no really interested buyer.
I think once we do this and serve lessons and put it on GovDeals, we'll be able to take it off the insurance and all that stuff, which will save us money. And then I think it'll give us a little bit more exposure. I'm not familiar with this particular company, but I know a lot of cities and stuff use GovDeals.
GovDeals, yes, ma'am. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
And the next? So, number four. Order authorizing acceptance of bid for human beings in certain causes incorporated for replacement, basic repair, and normal for treatment. Move through.
Say.
As stated by President Johnson, this is to accept this bid. It has gone through our internal process and the procedures. Everything has been done the correct way. I do have Mr. Lloyd here to speak about this item, should you request further information. But this is part of our due diligence to get our fresh water, wastewater up to date.
Is it emergent?
Is it? Yes, ma'am, it is.
Any other questions? Okay, and what's? If we award this, when will they have it complete?
I'm going to ask that Mr. Lloyd, if I have to come up. Mr. Fitzpatrick works for Burke Land Theater Incorporated. He's an engineer and a former project manager of the city.
Lloyd Fitzpatrick, Burke Land Theater. It is a three-month construction, I'm sorry, four-month construction contract, but there is some lead time on the equipment. So it should take six months total from when they start to when they finish. They are going to take the filter unit, remove all the media, all the under drains, empty concrete, put new drains and new filters, find or maintain it operation. We're going to do four filters at a time. We'll be done in six months. And this is a part of a much larger project that you all have loaned from the State of Nevada we've thrown, and we are presently designing to work some additional work at the worth and a lot of work at the B Street plant.
When do you expect to begin?
We expect to begin, we will issue the notice to proceed as soon as we get official notification that you all have authorized it.
When do you expect it to begin?
Begin the actual work, two months after we give the notice. We're going to give the notice to procure the supplies and then we will start work two months after.
January.
Yes.
You're beat there by June.
We will be finished before peak demand, peak somebody's demand, yes, sir.
What happens if you don't get it finished by June?
There, well, there is.
Is there?
They are liquidated damages in the contract.
Okay. It will make sure we're all.
There absolutely are. And your system, the B Street plant doesn't run all the time. So if something goes afoul, you can actually get more water out of B Street. There are some pump stations that will distribute. But we don't anticipate, this is a pretty straightforward contract, so we don't anticipate problems with this one.
Just don't want to come at the last minute and say, we didn't know.
I understand. Believe me, we don't want to be legal, tell you that.
Right. We heard it from other people. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And the next? Number five, claim factor. I want to suggest we separate pay load and all of that, sir. All of that, everything else except pay load. Except, oh, no. An opt, which is called a complaint. If I consent to that, I move to claim factor.
They're on the agenda that approved their one item. If we wanted to separate them on the agenda, we can.
I don't hear any encouragement to separate them, so let's just do the whole of this. All in favor? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
And the next? Number six, in-kind donation. Move through.
Say.
Mr. Mental Health?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next? Number seven. Move through.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And with two players before.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, bakers.
I just wanted to go with a few things. First of all, we wanted to send out, we have sent out and want to also give the council a clear release that we're wanting to send out to all of the citizens today. And basically, it's an issue that's coming up with our water meter system and our billing system within the city. And it reads, the city of Meridian is upgrading our water meter system. We ask that our citizens that notice a significant change in their statements, please contact 601-484-7173.
Could you say that number one more time?
601-484-7173 to find out if you have any billing adjustment issue. And please pardon our progress as we make these needed updates and to communicate to the council in case any of your constituents call you guys or say that they've had some issues. We have, we're trying to work out some of the issues that we've had between billing and also the time that we're putting out these new water meters. So there have been some, and we're working internally with the manufacturer and also with our billing department to work around those issues with our citizens. So, second, Planet Playground, we are continuing to move forward with the rehab demolition and to rebuild Planet Playground. There will be an official demolition date on Friday, November 17th. And hopefully we'll have more information to the council and to the citizens and hopefully build out for the new Planet Playground. It will take a few months, but hopefully by February, March, we'll be complete with Planet Playground. This weekend, we had, thanks to Parks and Rent, Coach Allen, had a great event, Harbor Middle School, had a wheelchair basketball gang. Thank you, Councilwoman Houston, also for being there with the USM Rolling Eagles. Had students, adults, myself, Ms. Kim, and some of the bankers playing this game. It was very intense. Wheelchair basketball team were very good.
Y'all did a lot of basketball.
No, no. We played basketball really well.
We all waited, see if they could.
That's not important, yeah.
We passed the ball well. They played very physical. They played for real. We pulled it off. They stopped you in those wheelchairs and played basketball sometimes, but it was fun. But I want to thank Coach Allen for putting it together and those guys that they'll be back again next year. Last but not least, Mr. Tampa is continuing to make progress on the free cook building to us again, to the citizens and to the businesses around downtown in that area, continuing to work with us as we move forward with this project. It'll be great for our city, but they do have a lot of work being done and just asking everyone to remain patient with us. And that's it for you.
I believe Mr. Mayor, you know, what Councilwoman Houston has made the work since we'll be next, be on the 23rd. We want to possibly talk about pay bands and whatever else that's on the ground.
Two, two, two.
Yes, sir. Two, three, and now, yes, sir. All right, now we move down to citizens' conference. Mr. Allen Seale. And Mr. Shipp. And Mr. Tony Williams. Today we have an executive session, so we're going to have the council come in first before the executive session. Mr. Webb said he had about 30 minutes he wanted to talk about. Oh, I said, my three-minute presentation might take me 30 minutes. Because I just can't get it out anymore and think organizer's thoughts at 80. As a sad, it's not important at all, but at 81 years old, this very day, 81 years ago, October 16th, 1937, I came into this world in Meridian, Mississippi.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. I am awfully blessed to still be here, here, let alone trying to do some of these things. I wanted to address, as I told you in my submission for approval, the pay bands, payrolls, compensation costs that the city at this point seems to be a major problem. I have considerable experience with employees. I was fortunate enough to handle a successful business and from 28 years beginning in 67, which I sold in 1995. And at the time that I sold, I had 200 employees. Now, what's the connection in a private business, 200 employees, in the city of Meridian, I mean, that's palatable, with 500, 600 employees? Primarily, the employer, whether it is me as a private employer or the city as the employer of citizens who work for the city. We both have the responsibility for the, for those employees. Mine went to work for me on their own free will and they frankly were hired almost one of the kind and went through certain qualification processes and reviews annually, every six months and annually, and were approved for increases or whatever during that period. The mayor's, as being responsible for the city of Meridian's employees, inherited them all at one time, 500, 600. I've heard both figures, I'm not sure which it is, but somewhere in that range. So, we effectively, we both have the same responsibility for those employees' compensation, benefits, and equal and fair treatment. Mayor's responsibility besides to the employees is to the citizens of Meridian to use those employees for the benefit of the city and to produce services to citizens to the best of his ability. So effectively, he has the fiduciary and the moral responsibility to both the citizens and to the employees. Regarding my employees, my primary responsibility, not to the citizens, but frankly was to my bankers, because in building the company, I borrowed a lot of money. I had to use certified bank statement, I mean, financial statements every year. And I had to satisfy my bankers that my financial statements showed the ability of my company to pay off the loans, to manage the cost of the company and the employees. Now, what's going on here in Meridian with this problem with the pay bands, the employees being unhappy and appearing to be directed their unhappiness at city council? Frankly, it is not the problem of the city council to manage the employees and their cost to the city. It's the mayor's responsibility. The mayor, as I understand it, in his administration from 2015, by all that I have heard, that evidence reported, is that $4 million has been added to the cost of employees to the city of Meridian since 2015, when there was virtually no increase in revenue. I don't know how you do that. Now, I do understand that a million eight went to the cost, extra compensation for the firemen and the police, which everybody seemed to agree with was necessary, but that money still had to come from somewhere. It wasn't created out of whole cloth. If there was no extra revenue, where did it come from? And then there's the 2.2 million that was paid to other employees. Where did that come from? And perhaps the mayor at another time and place can answer this on a day, it doesn't matter. Point is. Okay, Mr. Lloyd? I had to cut the sword here. I need third law. The point is, it's my opinion based on all the evidence I've seen, that the mayor has failed miserably in his responsibility to the citizens and to the employees. And he should not be directing the solution for that failure to the city council. You don't have the authority, you don't have the knowledge he needs to get into those employees, determine who's needed, how much he can afford to pay, and pay the right people the right amount. Thank you. Thank you. Before we move to that, there's an item that I thought we were going to add, claims that concern modern landscaping. I don't know at this point. And I don't know, I don't know, the feeling of the council, I think, is the equivalent of paying man's money.
Well, following these submission of the additional documents I provided, I suspect we still haven't received any report from the city attorneys after they've had a chance to look at that. So I think we should at least wait on some sort of report.
The documents are, did not produce any, they have no relevance to this. The state auditor had received a complaint and they've, they've never notified anyone that their investigation went anywhere. So at this point, it's really just a contract issue, whether the city council wants to pay or we can defend it in court.
Your opinion is legal to pay it?
It would, it would probably cost the city more to defend it in court and have to pay interest and possible attorney fees.
I would like, I asked that if community development, my request was that community development give us their opinion since it's their department that would have handled that. And if there was any research on the information that council, Leonard had presented, or we can just wait till the next agenda to add this item.
We have been meeting on this item, but due to potential pending litigation on it, we ask to discuss it in the executive session, should the council choose. And that is, if the attorney agrees.
We can add it.
No, no action?
No answer. Okay. All right, so moving to council, of course. Councilwoman.
I got a message yesterday evening from, well, I assume it's a friend. I didn't have their number saved in my phone, but they just sent me a link to a YouTube video. It was two professionals, they were suited up, had briefcase in hand, and they were headed up an escalator and then the escalator broke. And so instead of, you know, doing the obvious and taking the appropriate steps forward to reach the top of the escalator utilizing it as stairs, they instead waited and called for help, waiting on someone to come in and fix it. And I feel that it's extremely applicable to our current situation because while we're dealing with this pay band issue, we're in a similar situation where we can either wait on the broken escalator and call for help and hope that the administration will clean this up and treat all employees fairly and have an equitable evaluation system that works for everyone in a way that's appropriate and fair and reasonable and based on merit and not any sort of favoritism. Or we could take appropriate action ourselves if, at the end of the next couple of months, when we've set that January one deadline, if no reasonable action's been taken by the administration. And so I just found it was a very applicable metaphor to what we're facing right now as a city as a whole. We could either, as a council, wait on the escalator to be fixed, or we could take a few steps forward and reach our goal anyways. And with that, I want to add a sort of ultimatum that, to me, from my perspective, I don't think we should consider any sort of pay band. for everyone in a way that's appropriate and fair and reasonable and based on merit and not any sort of favoritism. Or we could take appropriate action ourselves if, at the end of the next couple of months, when we've set that January 1 deadline, if no reasonable action's been taken by the administration. And so I just found it was a very applicable metaphor to what we're facing right now as a city as a whole. We could either, as a council, wait on the escalator to be fixed, or we could take a few steps forward and reach our goal anyways. And with that, I want to add a sort of ultimatum that, to me, from my perspective, I don't think we should consider any sort of pay band adjustments until we're presented with a legitimate evaluation plan that includes employees having the ability to evaluate their supervisors' evaluation if not. So for instance, if you have a supervisor who evaluates an employee, that employee should be able to say they disagree with the evaluation. This way, we prevent any sort of situation where supervisors and department heads who serve at the willing pleasure of the mayor are put in a position where arm twisting or whatever you want to call it occurs, and they're, they have to do what they're told. And so by helping the employees to at least have the opportunity to evaluate the evaluations that they receive and then flag any inconsistencies. So for example, if you've got an employee that disagrees completely with the evaluation they receive, that should, there should be some sort of system in place as to where that ends up next. Those evaluations should be sent to us, or they should be sent to service. There should be some sort of equitable, fair system in place. And so that's the sort of ultimatum that I would like to deliver to the administration and hope that the council agrees with that sort of sentiment, that we should not even consider a pay band adjustment until we're presented with a legitimate solution to these problems that we did not create. And I have a problem with that cleanup for the next two and a half years, but I'd prefer that we could all stay on our, on our program aside as executive and legislative and so that we don't intend to have these situations. But in order to get there, in order to begin those habits trust, it's got to start with a fair and reasonable plan being presented that would solve this issue once and for all. And if you're not going to do that, then we're just going to have to take those steps for ourselves. And that's just the way I see the issue. And whoever thought it was a good idea to grab the recorder, the recording device, by the way, on the podium, that is not yours, so please return it. It's not mine either. But because of the pretty poor effort at live streaming the council meetings that the city puts on its webpage and occasionally deletes whenever things don't appear to be going to away, I had to pay someone else to come and film the council meetings. And that recorder belongs to them. So please return that for the end of this meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to see everybody out. I agree that we do need to have an evaluation process. I've said that, just so we can be fair for all individuals. And some of the things that we've heard since all of this stuff has happened, the morale is, it is getting tough. So that is something I think that we all have talked about. I think it's in this industry that there's evaluations. And I think the HR person did mention about, there are some evaluations in place. Now, whether or not those things are happening, that's definitely something I think we need to address in the upcoming work session. But I wanted to just encourage the community, those who are watching me live or whatever. We are, our school district really needs our support. I'm sure everybody is familiar with the scores and all that stuff that's come out. And the district thing this year is excellent. Excellence begins with me. We have mentoring programs. I know that Councilman Johnson, he does a lot, Fanny does, Mr. Linderman. I'm asking the community to get involved, volunteer. If you can just pick one day out of the week, I started back on to open heights, just opening car doors and giving the kids high five, just trying to build them up, because there's so much negative stuff being said about Meridian Public School District and our children. Our children can learn. They can do. They're just as good as Madison School District. The difference is the community involvement, parental involvement, people just taking these babies under our wings and loving on them and letting them know that there is greatness inside of them. I'm going to be kicking off an initiative called Manpower in the next month or so. And I want to begin with our city leaders and asking every man that can to volunteer for at least one hour, one day a week. And you don't have to read unless you want to. You don't have to do anything awesome, but just about a presence in the classroom. Some of our students, because they're not exposed to men in the home, sometimes when they are in the classroom, they tend to straighten up a little bit. And so it's a manpower initiative that we're kicking off. And I wanted to begin here and ask our men of the city, our city leaders, to get involved with this initiative. And I'll give you more information later. But we do need, ladies, gentlemen, we need volunteers. If it's opening car doors, if it's reading, parents, if you have children, try to read at least 20 minutes a day with your child. It doesn't have to necessarily be a book. It could be a magazine. It could be the box, the back of the Fruit Loop box. I mean, just anything. Be creative and expose our children to more, because it is still my philosophy that if Meridian Public School District does not succeed, our city is going to be in trouble. So I'm asking you all to grab hold of this school district thing that excellence begins with me. That's me, that's you. And let's see what we can do to try to be the cheerleaders for our students and help them reach another level, because we can. We can do that. Thank you all for coming.
Thursday night is Buds and Burgers again. Please come out down by the train station, St. and Broadway Park. You can get about 20 tasteful burgers for about $10. And that comes to Love's Kitchen. On Friday night, there is a real, Brizzy Ralph's, a real, it's at the Max Lora. And the preview is going to be the films that the children made a couple of months ago that a lot of us are in. And that's going to be the preview from 4:30 for a little reception. And 5:30, 6:30 will be that film that our children made. They did it in Jackson, had a great turnout. I want to thank the entire community, the program at the kitchen. We've got, I think, 13 people showed up for the job fair. One has been hired and is working. We've helped one of the homeless guys get into a shelter. We are proving that Meridian did come together for our homeless population. And whether a lot of them come through or not, Meridian can say that they have a place for the homeless population to come, be in and out. If they want resources, they can get them. If they don't, they don't have to. So I want to say, and I know we're proud a lot, but I'm proud of this community for coming together and making sure that we do show the least of them, that we care about them. Thank you.
You mentioned about planning a playground. The whole community's come together, tried to buy the playground and successful to all of people, in wheelchairs, crutches, whatever, any age group. Been working on this for a couple of years now. The community foundation has agreed to hold the money till we get to that point. Administration has been the leader in putting these things together, like the mayor said, you have a day to take some of the pieces apart and not destroying those pieces. You're going to store those pieces. A local business has agreed to do that. One of the local civic clubs has agreed to match donations, I think up to $10,000. They'll match any $100 donation. So if you're looking for some way for Thanksgiving or Christmas or Hanukkah or whatever holiday you support, $100 donated that project will be matched by another $100. Kim talked about the children in the community being good. Two young men play football in one of the local schools have gone out and raised, I think, my last cap, close to $50,000. William Lamar and Jake Davidson have taken this on as a project. They're both teenagers. They have a lot going on in their life, playing ball, doing Boy Scouts, and a lot of other things. They've decided to help this community. When we talk about helping the schools and everything else, if you can get a few more people to just halfway duplicate what two teenagers in this community have done, we could accomplish a lot. To think that two teenagers can go out and raise approximately $50,000 to help with a project like this that will benefit all of the people in this community, whether or not they're agile or physically able to do it. So there are a lot of good things going on. Sometimes I think we concentrate so much on the problems, we don't spend enough time on the solutions. But I think these two young men in particular, William Lamar also previously put together a project to do in tiles that'll be put out there. If you've been out there, some of them remember when we put that playground together where children could put their name on a tile and that type of thing. So he's done double duty on this thing. So again, there are opportunities out there. A lot of people say they don't have time. If you think you can go to high school and maintain excellent grades, play football, play soccer, be active in the Boy Scouts, and still leave $50,000 in the community, you have time. It's just a matter of where you want to spend the time. Again, if you're interested in this, you can contact the administration here. The county is also cooperating with this. Or you can just make a donation straight to the community foundation on behalf of planning playground.
Quickly wanted to say that we are the city of Meridian, the administration, city council, public workers, recreations, it doesn't matter. We all fall under that umbrella of city of Meridian. So if we try to make one look bad, we all gonna look bad. I got a few things here. Number one, the scores did come back, picking up what Ms. Kim said. McNooy Middle School is known as the success of school. They received a good grade on that. Thanks to Ms. Angela Corley and Mr. Sharad Miller. They do a great job over there. Number two, we have breakings going on over here at the Bell Young Community Center. They got GD classes, a class called Afro Science, where they use African dance and they exercise at the same time. Paint your feelings, use your emotions, paint. So there's a lot of programs going on with the Bell Young Center. So I encourage you guys to just go over there, take a look at, or be a part of what we have going on over there. Halloween festival, again, is going to be October 26th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I partnered with NIH from Meridian and Carolize to bring this event over to the Bell Young area. So we're going to have the Hunter House, the movie playing on the back of the projector, music, candy, gift boys, face painters, and more. Community-wide meeting, I'm gonna have this in November. I have that date, but I just realized that it's going to be federal phase. I'll change it. So I give you guys a date, an update on that. I've been researching ways, I've been speaking with the mayor about the swimming pool, but I know when we have some come up next year. But my vision is, and I don't know if this will get done, but this is just a case, it's okay to dream big. But my vision is I wanted to make this an indoor pool facility. And that way, we can bring a new support to the community for youth. I think it'll change a lot of lives, as if you could have to go over to the Bell Young Park now. We changing the quality of life for a lot of the citizens in that area. So it's being used. They're very excited about the progress that's been made. Elmwood Cemetery, we're going to have a cleanup this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. It's on 10th Avenue and 24th Street. And I have something here that I kind of want to read to you guys real quick. I have it says, World War I, also known as First World War or Great War. It was a Europe, Europe, I'm sorry. It was a global or originated from Europe, last on July 28th from 1914 to the 11th of 1918. Contemporary is described as the war to end all wars, and it led to the mobilization of more than 70 million personnel, including 60 million Europeans, making it one of the largest wars in history. This is why I wanted you to pay attention to here. An estimated 9 million combatants and 7 million civilians died as a result of that war. And the reason I bring that is because out of the 9 million combatants that died in that war, we have at least two dozen at Elmwood Cemetery. And that is why I'm very vocal in, I'm trying to get this cemetery cleaned up. So hopefully in the near future, we can do things to be able to keep this cemetery cleaned up. But we do have a lot of people in the community that's coming out and supporting this cause. I think it should be a landmark, because there's a lot of African-American men who fought in the war, who's buried there, and I think we should do something. It's been a eyesore for roughly five decades in this community. So it's time that we should do something about that. Moving on to the next thing, so that's all I have, so.
I want to say something.
Okay.
I had a very special server slash dishwasher at the kitchen today. And I would like to thank President Johnson for somebody at the kitchen helping out today.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
Mayor, could you mention about Halloween and who'd wear masks? Maybe the police chief, he'd get off his phone. That's teenage.
Four years and others are allowed to wear masks. And I know that they're probably in secret organs. We do allow trick-or-treaters to be out at night with curvings. But they are allowed to be out at night, but I recommend that they're in bright clothing, accompanied by an adult, without a mask. Ask the parents to inspect any treats or treats that they get. Yes, we are known Halloween.
Okay. We do a lot of housework.
It is a current Halloween.
And we're going to send something out to all the media about the times and the masks that's soon.
We will definitely take care of that.
Very good. Because a lot of people forget, they may think that it's cute to be 20 years old, wear a mask, and knock on somebody's door at 8 o'clock at night. That's not really what I do.
And you always go, not, they're lighting them, right?
We recommend that. The people that are giving the treats, whatever, make sure their front porch light is on. And if the front porch light is not on, then we don't recommend knocking on the door.
Dr. Thomas, we are doing candy crawl next Tuesday as well, 4:30 until 6:30. They all come this Tuesday to City Hall.
Good. You would get.
Candy crawl on Tuesday?
Yes.
At what time?
4:30 until 6:30.
That's a good, safe place rather than dropping your children off in some neighborhood that you don't live in.
Okay. So I moved, and we're going to the executive session to discuss another development in interdication.
George.
Yeah, you word it up. Let's go into closer termination, determine whether or not to stay in the executive session concerning possible economic development and also payment of HRs to the local business.
Second. All the way. In the next.